Wednesday, May the 8th, 2024, at 6:31 PM. If we'd all please rise and pay respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And could you please note the roll?
Noted, there is a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion through the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari and a second by Trustee Charles. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Item five, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion through the consent agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari and a second by Trustee Ch- uh, Trustee Knoll. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
clerk right, yes, Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Knoll?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Okay, item number six, public comment on items not on the agenda.
Good evening, Brian Cloutier, Director, Oxford Public Library. I just want to make a couple of comments. One, after the unfortunate event that occurred where my entire board was disqualified from the ballot, I did reach out to our legal counsel just to get a brief opinion on if anything could take place to remediate that issue. In her opinion, she did not say that legal remediation couldn't take place, but she did advise that it would likely not be our battle to take on, it would be the township's battle. In that, this is not our election, it is your election. I also know that there are neighboring communities at this point, at least one, that is taking legal action to try to find some form of remediation. I'm not here to argue who should or should not be on a ballot. I'm not here to say that we should or should not have integrity in elections. I would uphold all of those, that we should have integrity in elections, and that everybody should have the right to be on the ballot. But I think what happened here is a unique situation, in that there are circumstances that pertain to particularly libraries. And in this statement that you shared with me, Clerk Wright, there is a clause that talks about district library establishment. It's kind of ironic, though, that all of the library boards that were impacted by this are PA 164 libraries, they're not district libraries. And that if you look at our Establishment Act, it clearly states in that act that whenever elections are discussed, it's a November election. I don't know what happened, well, I've been told what happened, but I really don't know what happened. All I can say is, if there is any legal recourse that this township can take to protect your elections and the integrity of your candidates that are on the ballot, it would greatly be appreciated. And if I can help in any way, I'm more than happy to do that as well. Because this really is a very unfortunate event, and it really needs to be taken into serious consideration that these candidates went door-to-door and they got signatures like many of you. And there were people who were expecting them to be on the ballot. We also have an expectation that the people who are advising us are advising us with the correct information. And when we're given incorrect information and something is certified out of here and when it lands at the county, is disqualified, it's very disheartening. I've had this board for a long time. They're great people, they're dedicated public servants, they do what they do without pay, and they deserve a little more respect than that.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Good evening, my name is Jeffrey Ahmed, I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm a candidate for Township Trustee, and I'm excited to learn more about this process, and I'm excited to see if I'm elected, if I can be a good representative here for the community. So, thank you so much for what you guys do, and excited to see things go forward.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to speak? Seeing none. We'll move on to item seven, Board of Trustees' Comments. We'll start down with Trustee Colvin.
Uh, nothing at this time, I'll wait for you.
Trustee Payne?
Say.
Trustee Knoll?
Thank you, but no thank you.
Trustee, your Treasurer Ferrari?
I'd like to see items 10A through D, when we get there, be tabled, because I got concerns on them all. I'd like to have them addressed in front of the Personnel Committee. That's my comments.
Okay. Trustee Charles?
Couple of quick comments, one is, maybe jump a little bit. The website committee did follow you around the meeting, we can talk about it later on. I have minutes prepared for our meeting this week, and I'll put that in the next Board Agenda packet. And then Friday, Oxford has some youth assistance, we have a dinner, everyone's been invited to it. It's a great organization, I would encourage people to attend. I know they greatly appreciate what the Board does for that group. They do a lot of good things for people in our community. So that's this Friday, by the way.
Okay, I will be there. Clerk Wright?
No comment at this point.
Okay, I have some. Just for public information. Through our grant writer, we were, we got a grant for election security, and we installed cameras throughout the building. With our Board approving the electronic entry to the building, we now have electronic entry. What this means is, it is recorded every time we come in and every time we go out. You are on camera when you're in here 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. We welcome you in and out, you have full access, I just want to let you know, you're on. If I get a notification at 8:30 on a Sunday night, I immediately look to see who's in the building, just to ensure the safety of the building and those in the building. I know the sergeant has come up here, and I know lieutenant has driven in the parking lot. So, just as public information, the building is camera and electronically entered. We all know when people are coming and going. Secondly, the elections. I know that Brandon has elected to go with a lawsuit against the County Election Board. I don't know if their insurance pays for it, I don't know if they're taking their money out of the fund, but I'm waiting for direction from Clerk Wright, who is in charge of the elections, to tell me, to bring in front of this Board that we want to engage in litigation against the county for what happened. I know that on April 5th, through a selfish act on my own, I'd learned that some people were being disqualified. I called down there and they wouldn't even talk to me. They hung the phone up on me, they wouldn't answer the phone for me. And when I finally did get somebody to talk to, they told me I had no real reason to talk to them. So, in all reality, they don't work for the county, they work for themselves. And I'm very disgusted with their customer service. I'm very dissatisfied with the way they're treating people that work in our community and provide us with library commissions, park commissions, and all the communities, and their selfless acts, free of charge, to help our community. And I'm of the opinion that we should seek litigation against them, so that's my comment. Number eight, fire department.
The only I have tonight, folks, is ask if you could reach out to our U.S. Federal reps, Lisa McLean, asking her to support the funding for the SAFER grants and the Assistance to Firefighter grants that are going to be coming up for a vote. It would be greatly appreciated, that's the stuff that, like this year alone, we've applied for a grant through the Assistance to Firefighters for a new tanker. We've, we're involved in a grant request for, a regional grant request for replacement of our SCBA's. And, yes, sir.
SAFER grants?
SAFER, S-A-F-E-R, it's an acronym.
C. Daniels would it be?
Yep, he probably does, yes, sir. The Assistance to Firefighter Grant gets, gives us equip, gives equipment. It's funded this year, but it's up for renewal to be funded next year and beyond. And then the SAFER Grant provides manpower, so, and we've actually, we've put in for all the grants this year, and we're hoping to, we're, we've got, there's money allocated this year, but it's not funded through the next seven years after this. While it's in place, it's not allocated funds. So if we can get any kind of letter of support to Lisa McLean, she'll be voting on our behalf, obviously, so.
I'll get that done.
On behalf of us.
Yes.
Of the Board.
Yeah, I've made a note here.
Awesome.
I've met with Lisa McLean a couple of times, she's treated Oxford rather fairly, and I think she will listen to me, and Alex, who is her aide here in Lake Orion, he comes and visits me all the time, so we will get that information to them.
Awesome, that's the only thing I had tonight, thank you very much. Unless you have anything for me.
Thank you. Okay, in your packet tonight, Board Members, Sharp Engineering Report. I'm not going to read it, but if you have any questions or concerns, I'll address it in Mr. Sharp's absence. Hearing none. Item 10, unfinished business. Item A, Employee Handbook Revision. Trustee Colvin?
Yes, actually, I'd like to say A through D together, if we could. The Personnel Committee was tasked with handling revisions to the employee handbook and coming up with policies to establish committees, and policies for how to compensate Board Members for non-statutory duties. And we've asked Nancy Olin, our attorney Olin, to present these revisions for us, so she has a short presentation that can probably explain things.
Attorney Olin?
Good evening, everyone, thank you so much for having us here to talk about the Personnel Committee's recommendations. There is a presentation that doesn't appear at the, it's working, so I will just tell you what I came to tell you.
On my second Commissioner's comments, I will address that.
All right, there. All right, so there are several items that are presented. That first item is related to the handbook. The handbook had not been updated in quite a while, and there were some needs to make some revisions and additions, just to make sure that it became in compliance with basic labor and employment laws. Some examples might include information about the FLSA status, pay practices, establishing criteria to meet certain eligibility requirements. So this, the changes that were made were generally to ensure compliance. And then while we were at it, we also kind of restructured it a bit. There's some different names assigned in the handbook, so instead of saying, if, if you have a complaint to make, it said the new title would be dispute and resolution process. So it's just a little bit more formalized and consistent across, and those are the major changes. So you have a motion and a resolution to adopt, excuse me, you have a motion to approve the handbook revisions and additions if the Board wants to do so.
I believe we have to have each one separately as a resolution and as our revision approval, correct?
Correct. Yes, for the record?
Yeah, so we will see.
These are all separate items, so there's one motion for the handbook, and then there are different resolutions to motions for the others.
A, B, C, D, E. A, B, C, D. Thank you.
Any questions? I do.
Yes.
So we worked very hard on this, and we read it, and read it, and read it, read it some more. One thing that I think we might have missed was on page 6, in under overtime. And it discusses if exempt employees will not receive overtime payment when working more than 48 hours in a work week unless explicitly authorized by the department head. We had asked that, say, with notification to the Township Supervisor. This says authorized by the department head and Township Supervisor. I feel that each department has its own budget and should have the wherewithal to make the decision about overtime. So I think, you know, with that change, I agree with everything else.
Okay. Treasurer Ferrari?
Would you, as you know, we just got this like on Thursday or Friday, I probably got about two pages I could bring in front of the committee. Am I going to go through each item now? I saw, I would see table, and have any trustees that have concerns bring it in front of the committee, have the committee take a look at it. That's just my opinion.
Trustee Charles?
So the item that Trustee Payne just brought up, is that something that could be revised or does it need to be put back? I mean, it makes sense what you said.
I would think that it could, just, the motion could read with this change.
That, that is correct, the motion could be made with the revisions suggested. And in the timeline for when this happens, once the Board approves, we'll do another scan of the document to make sure there are no typos, anything like that, before it's disseminated to the employees and put on their website and those kind of things. There'll be one more check, an opportunity to do that, so you can have a motion to approve the changes with the revisions recommended.
So we're approving changes, we're not approving the handbook tonight, potentially?
It's technically the same thing. You're approving the changes to the handbook.
We're approving the handbook.
But then we're going to have further changes.
Well, you're always going to have changes, right? As the law changes, as policy changes, as the township grows, your employee base changes, you're going to change it. So, it's a living document, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just wondering about the protocol, not about the theory.
Yeah, the, the protocol would be if there is another future change to a policy, it would be presented to the Board for approval and inclusion. Just like when we did the PTO changes, just the PTO changes, six, seven months ago, I think, where we got one bucket of PTO, and we made those changes. The Board approved those revisions, and it would be the same for any future ones.
In the future, I think, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Nancy, but I believe that as we, as the Board moves to change things on the Personnel Policy, they will be added as an addendum or an amendment to the policy.
Yes.
And what we've done, what Nancy has done is taken all of the old denims and added them into the body of the work. So now it's just a nice clean copy. I feel, I think our committee feels very competent in this, in this document.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have some. Thank you very much, committee members, for working on this. I know Susan was part of it, Margie was part of it, Curtis was part of it. You met for hours, read, read, and reread, and we have done this more than one time, approving changes as they occur. What we're cleaning up tonight, and all due respect, Mr. Treasurer Ferrari, is the fact that we have some changes that must be made. So we're going to move forward with a motion, if I hear one, to approve these changes or deny them based on our attorney's recommendation and the committee's recommendation.
I move to approve and adopt additions and revisions to Oxford Township Employee Handbook with a change on page 6, with notification to Township Supervisor, and authorize a committee meeting in June to discuss any further comments that other Board Members may have on the document to be brought back in front of the Township Board for a final decision, and you.
I'll second for discussion.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari and a second by Trustee Knoll. What's your questions?
Could you explain how the, this would go about? Would the committee sit in a conference room and trustees would come and go?
Yep, they would, pretty much.
Now here, let me answer that question. The committee will take the recommendations from the individuals into their committee and work on it, just as we always have. The committee works on it and makes recommendations to us, and we vote on them to make them in the book or out of the book, so.
If I can add, going along with the attorney said, we can pass this package tonight for all better procurement policy.
Personnel policy, I don't know.
Thank you. We can pass the Personnel Policy tonight. Then does the committee stay in action to further do work on it, or do they?
Yes.
So we can, if we desire to petition the committee for changes within that, we can do that at any time.
We can do it in June, July, August, September, October, and if you're re-elected, in November.
And the attorney says it's the best practice for the township to approve it tonight and then move on with our changes at a later date if that, if those are so to come about.
I would affirm that, yes, in my opinion, these changes are needed in order to make sure that some of the provisions that are related to compliance with legal labor and employment laws are met. The other, there are some changes that are not necessarily legal, but they are good to have, best practices for fine clarification. So yes, in my opinion, I believe that you should take action on the changes with the understanding that if further revisions are needed, those can be made at any time.
And the reason I ask all this, I sit in a lot of different committees, this is the first time we, we discussed things coming back into committee as recommendations from other Board Members to be changed, changes to what their, their scope of work is.
And John, I want to clarify one thing, this is a living document.
Correct.
If we find something wrong, we change it. If there is a law change, we change it. The problem with it is, is we haven't owned it, like Treasurer Ferrari is saying. We haven't gone through this thing with a fine-tooth comb in two or three years until now. We changed what is legal and what is required. Now, what we feel, I don't think we can do by June, because there's people that go on vacation, and I think that putting a deadline on getting these things in is wrong. I think the committee needs to meet at their time and tell us when they're done. It's already the law, if we vote tonight to approve this, it goes into rules, laws are into our Personnel Handbook. But if we put a deadline in June, who's gone, who's on vacation, we don't know. So let's, I would suggest that we approve this handbook as presented by the committee, recognizing the hard work in getting us legal. I would recommend that we move forward in the committee to address any changes as they come forward. And a recommendation from that committee be brought to this Board for consideration. Except it had a June deadline, and I believe that's too fast. Today's May 8th, and you want it done by June 12th.
I could move it to July.
We can't get a sewer line in in three years. Yes, sir?
So I, I see we have three choices, approve it as is, is what you're suggesting, and then we could also delay it as Treasurer Ferrari is suggesting. And then what Trustee Payne said is, we can make a change tonight on that one small issue.
One small issue, and we cleared up some legal stuff.
We could do that one small one and move forward, I think, I mean, my thoughts on that, that would be my recommendation. Now, we first have to vote down Joe's.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Charles.
And then have to go back with, though, it's a Trustee Payne.
Correct.
Okay? If I may suggest that.
All right, does anybody have any questions? Hearing none, call roll.
Trustee Colvin?
No.
Trustee Payne?
No.
Trustee Knoll?
No.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
No.
Let's go, Trustee Charles.
No.
Clerk Supervisor Curtis?
No. Look for a motion.
I move to approve and adopt additions and revisions to the Oxford Township Employee Handbook, including the revision by Trustee Payne, and authorize the supervisor to publish and disseminate the same to all employees.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Trustee Colvin and a second by Trustee Charles. Any questions?
No.
Yes, sir?
Just a comment in the motion, it doesn't indicate what that change was in the handbook itself.
He referenced the change that Margie, Trustee Payne made. Do you want that read into the motion? Do we have to amend the motion, do we have to just state it now?
You don't want to amend the emotion to make it official.
So we vote this motion down. Let's do it.
Yeah, the overtime change is on the second paragraph of page, under overtime of page 6.
So we have to vote this motion down, and then can, Trustee Colvin will make the motion with the proper verbiage.
You can voice vote this, sir, clerk right.
Roll call? Trustee Charles?
No.
Clerk Wright?
No.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Trustee Knoll?
No.
Trustee Payne?
Yeah.
Trustee Colvin?
No.
Supervisor Curtis?
No. I look for a motion.
I move to approve and adopt additions and revisions to the Oxford Township Employee Handbook, including revising the overtime section on page 6, paragraph 2, to state overtime explicitly authorized by the department head and notify, notification given to the Township Supervisor.
And I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Trustee Colvin, a second by Trustee Charles. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Knoll?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Sure. Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Sure as lot of votes.
Supervisor Curtis? I have a question.
I'm sorry. Yes, Judge.
So, should we get the committee meet again and we get questions and situations where it's some of the other Board Members?
want us to address certain issues? If we don't agree with that, what do we do with it?
You don't recommend them.
Okay.
The committee recommends to the board for approval. If the committee, we charge the committee with making the proper decision that they feel.
I'm just, I'm just thinking that possibly, it might possibly be a better choice if there's one or two items that, rather than go to committee, that, that the person who has an issue bring it to the board, and the board say, we will, yes, we're all in agreement, we want this changed. You know, I, I'm just, you know, it's just a thought, that that might be a better way to handle it.
Trustee Colvin?
I was just going to suggest everybody, anybody, board member that has any concerns, email me their concerns, I can put it together, and then I can call a committee meeting to discuss, and we can come out of there with a recommendation.
Trustee Nold?
I agree with trustee Colvin. To bring things to the board when you already have a committee responsible for handling certain tasks, doesn't make sense to bring it to the board, try to bypass the committee.
Okay. Everybody's good, then.
Just a quick thing.
Yes.
Life insurance now, what do we offer? Is it a hundred thousand?
Fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, it's fifty, okay.
Term life? Anything down there, fifty is considered taxable.
Item 10B, resolution to establish committees. Trustee Colvin?
I would ask attorney Oland to run through what we did for that as well.
So, the board's prior discussion, just a few moments ago, could not have been a better segue into this. This is a policy to, this is an opportunity to create a policy about the creation of committees for the board. So, before you, tonight, you have a resolution to adopt the policy. The policy includes some of the provisions that you were just talking about. It would define the committee's purpose, set eligibility and composition of the, and the committee members. That means it could be a board member, employees, residents, members of the public, consultants, whatever the recommendation is for that committee. Then it also defines what the appointment process, which is appointments to the board are approved by a majority vote. It establishes guidelines for what the committee needs to do, and they need to establish a committee lead or a chair that serves as that contact person. They'll define their responsibilities. The board's resolution would also include whether there was gonna be any compensation provided for participation on the committees. Before we ask questions about that, we have, the next one is a policy about how do you decide about the compensation. This is just saying that it, that it can be included. Also, what are the expectations for membership, participation, what are you supposed to be doing? How we would dissolve the committee if we needed to, and then how we would ensure compliance and oversight. And one of the things that's in that policy talks about committees are going to do a report to the board with their minutes. So, they'll, we, once that committee's established, it's not just gonna go into the mist, and you won't know what happens until they show up with an issue. If you're on a committee, or if there's a need for a committee to exist, even if there's no additional action, that should still be provided in a report to the boards, so they know the activity of their commissions, or, or committees. So, that talks about that in this policy and provides some guidelines on how to do that. Can I answer any questions?
Treasurer Ferrari? B and C, they kinda go together. What I'd like to see happen, you got five chairperson leadership. I'd like to see somehow, instead of having paid for non-statutory duties, compensate your chairperson of the committee and your secretary of the committee at a, at a higher rate, understanding they're gonna have more statutory duties to do, even a chairperson, secretary of any committee, whether it's water sewer, safety path, however, the way you wanna do it. Because it's compensation for non-duties, to me, that shouldn't exist. They should have somebody that's, I, I look at water sewer, but think that one. That person will be the chair, me, you, or Santa Claus. That person's got a lot of work to do. I've got two people that are chair on that committee that will tell you that. That should be compensated as an extra level, whether trustee takes it on or supervisor takes it on. There should be an extra compensation. So, if they're doing work on water and sewer, whether selected official or trustee, they're not doing work on something else. That's a lot of work for, for these committees. That's that part. And item eight, if a committee is not able to attend meetings or is failed to be prepared to complete or assign a task, another member may request removal. You never wanna be in judgment of your peers. Never, never, never. Because that could be so political. Take us out of it. Let's say they're Democrat and Republican. I don't like Democrat acts. I request them, sorry.
Joe, listen to me and keep the analogies out.
I don't want that.
You want changed in the recommendation.
I think that that should not, you should never be in judgment of each other, that the chairperson may request removal, not another member. Because once you get into that, you can get into whole political animals, somebody not liking another committee member, for whatever reason, saying, I don't want this committee member on here, I want removal. So, you, us as elected officials, that's up to the people to judge us.
Right, understood.
They'll judge us in August and November.
So...
Trustee Payne? I think the wage thing is, um, is, should be, take place during wages, not during the personnel, not during this time period. How we wanna compensate people, it takes place when we do the budget.
And in non-statutory wage payment, it's determined by this board, if somebody's gonna work 20 hours on a committee, that the rest of the committee is not meeting. That's addressed with our item C.
So, a couple of points, may I make a couple of points? Okay, so, the, the non-statutory duty requirement, that is set by statute. If you have a statutory duty, set by statute, like the supervisor has a very long list in 4210, the treasurer has a, a long, shorter list but longer, and then also the clerk has a longer list. The trustees have a very, very, very small list. Certain board members are allowed to receive non-compens, non-statutory duty pay, which would be your trustees in general. The other board members are just, they're not even eligible for it. So, you have to meet the statutory requirement, and we'll get into that in the, in the next one as to why. But, it does, in my opinion, need to be a separate policy because it's very much defined. And you have to remember that fiduciary duties are part of being on, on a board member on an elected board. And with that comes the duty of care and the duty of loyalty. And so, what the courts interpret as far as non-statutory pay is, as a board member, I'm expected to be well-informed so that I can make a vote based on information. So, the way the courts would look at performance of non-statutory duties, it would, you'd have to say, find a way to say that it was non-statutory because you have a requirement to educate yourself and know what you're voting on. So, that's where it can get a little confusing, and the board would have an opportunity to weigh in and say, okay, well, we believe that this is not part of just being prepared in order to make a vote, and then assigning that statutory duty. But you have to look at the duty. Is it outside of what my duties are, and with the care, the duty of care and loyalty? It's kinda hard to get outside of that duty because you have a duty to be prepared. So, it's, it's a, it's a big stretch.
Okay. Trustee Charles?
Got a couple of comments. I tend to agree with what Treasurer Ferrari stated about judging other committee members. That's just a quick point.
That's a good point, yes.
At a high level, you know, the, the old acronym KISS, Keep It Simple, Stupid, I think, is violated because there's just too many little things going on here. And I would think that the clerk's office would have to keep track of a lot of loose ends, and it seems like it'd be a big waste of her time if you do a lot of these things. It just seems like, this committee pays a hundred and thirty bucks, this one pays a hundred and thirty-five, it just seems like it's, you know, it needs to be simplified, is my point.
Okay. Trustee Colvin?
I just wanna clarify, I think, and attorney Oland, correct me if I'm wrong. All we're doing with this resolution, with this policy, is setting up a fact that this board can establish committees, and what the board can say. We're not establishing any pay here.
Correct.
We're just saying we can do it. We're not saying we are doing it. And like trustee Payne said, pay should be, you know, established during budgets.
That is correct.
This is not what this policy is doing.
That is correct. I, I agree with your assessment. This is simply to put the processes and a policy in place for how this board will create committees and assign the members and what they're doing.
Yes, sir. Trustee Nold? I just lean back.
There's a lot of work that went involved with this, and I understand that because I sit on many committees. The purpose and scope in the last paragraph that talks about the resolution or motion should be specific to the committee's purpose, composition, and expected duration. I want, go, when I, I added compensation, because when you go to page three of four, the chairperson leadership describes, "Are the responsible taking many notes?" There's discussion in here, I can't find it right now, that says, "When the committee is formed under this document, then compensation should, is part of it." Do you wanna take that out and put that into the next, the item number C?
So, through the chair to the trustee, item number seven in this policy that talks about committee compensation, there's a separate policy that talks about how you're gonna establish what that compensation is. This, when you establish this committee, it's an opportunity to say there will be compensation. The board will determine how much it is, for example, using some of the things that the treasurer was speaking about, where if it's a committee where it's not very labor-intensive, you know, there might not be compensation. But when there's one where you know it's gonna be hours and hours of preparation and attendance and long meetings, it might be more. Right? So, you might get a hundred dollars for attending a certain committee meeting, and you might get 300 for another, based on the complexity and the need. That would be up to the board's total discretion.
Okay. I, I tried to put my shoes on and walk through this, and see how it actually was gonna work. And I was, the compensation is what I didn't understand in this creation of the committees. So, there'll just be a verification that they will be compensated. The next item C will talk about the compensation.
Yeah, through, through the supervisor to the trustee, yes, they are, will do.
During, during our budget meetings, we always approve committee meeting pay by members. Non-statutory duty pay would, would be additional pay for those members doing items on that committee. And I can give you a good example. Someone worked on our waste hauler proposal. Three people did. Labor-intensive, outside, outside the realm of reality. I believe they've got it done, but they were not compensated for the work they did fairly. Not a fair statement? They were compensated by a meeting. However, many of those people on that committee worked at night, and in the, on the weekend, to work on these things that they did not get paid for. People turned in committee meeting pay. There was no committee meeting scheduled, but yet they did the work. So, this form or resolution is trying to right that wrong and, and make this a palatable thing for us to do our work and be compensated for. Do you agree? Trustee Colvin?
Yes. I move to approve the resolution to establish policy and standards for establishing board and trustee committees, and authorize the clerk to execute the file of same.
Second. A motion by trustee Colvin, a second by trustee Nold. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call?
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Nold?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
And supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Item C, resolution to assign, compensate, non-statutory duties. Trustee Colvin?
I would ask attorney Oland to please run through our, our.
Absolutely. Before the board tonight is a resolution to approve the policy about how non-statutory duty compensation will be assigned to board members for doing non-statutory duties. Included with that is also a resolution template, so that when the board makes those compensation decisions, it's done via resolution, which will be very helpful for you for your audits and things like that, because it's related to, you know, the financial and the fiduciary duty. So, that policy is written to make sure that there is no violation of two specific laws that come into play related to statutory duty. One is the contracts of public servants, so making sure that there is no personal interest or any conflict there. And then also incompatible offices, where you cannot be subservient to someone else. So, it's, it's, you can't have two offices that are in conflict with each other. And so, if you are supervising or authorizing for someone that you supervise, that would be a conflict. So, that's why, where we wanna be careful to avoid those. And I understand the dislike of the idea of non-statutory duty pay. We're stuck with it because it's, it's codified in multiple laws with the, it's part of the charter township, so. Now, this policy, let me tell you what it includes. You know, obviously, except you had your resolution. It's gonna talk about the committee's, the, um, again, the purpose is listed in there, but policy definitions. It'll set eligibility for who's cop, who's eligible. Remember, that first question is going to be, is this outside of your responsibilities of your statutory duties? So, if the answer is yes, it's outside, then we're gonna move on, and we're gonna talk about the compensation process. And the board's gonna get to decide, is this gonna be a stipend? Is, will it be, okay, you can do it and submit for reimbursement? Are we gonna come up with a fixed hourly rate that says you earn X amount of dollars per hour, and then you can put a caveat on it that says up to a certain number of hours, so that you can maintain control of all of those costs and, and really, you know, maintain oversight? It's also gonna have that committee's reporting, expectations and requirements, oversight, and then, like I said, there's that template for the resolution, so that it's as formal as it can be, and that's very helpful for audits, which is related to, to dollars. I'm sure the treasurer, whoever manages your audits probably knows that better than me.
If I can give you a what-if?
Give me a what-if?
Yes, what-if. If one of the trustees on the committee has to do 20 hours' worth of work towards completing a task, this board can approve a compensation for that trustee to do that task by this time, limiting the number of hours and the amount of money we're gonna pay for it.
Provided the answer to the first question is this is beyond what is a statutory duty? Yes.
Okay.
That first question, I'm repeating it because that's where folks get hung up. That's always the, if they, if they're working extra, they think it's not a statutory duty. So, that's why establishing the compensation for the committee is so critical, because, you know, a lot of, the statutory duties can be interpreted very, very broadly because of that duty of care and duty of loyalty.
Okay. Trustee Nold?
I just have one question. Page three of four, reporting item 8.2. "A summary of the compensation provided to the board members shall be made available to the public on the official website or through other means of public communications."
You had that question, too.
Can you walk me through how that's gonna happen?
Would you tell me again which one you were pointing at?
Page three of four.
Yep.
Reporting 8.2, it's the very bottom, last sentence on page.
Well, this is already, I mean, you would be able to figure out exactly how you want it to go, but technically, a lot of this is already gonna be published because of your package, where you're boosting all the bills that you paid, all of those expenses. This is an extra provision so that you're on top of it, and this board knows exactly what the compensation piece is to.
All right. Trustee Colvin, had your hand up first, clerk Wright?
I'd just like to say, I mean, I do think this board does, when we establish pay, et cetera, it's gonna be in the minutes, it's gonna be in the agendas, it's gonna be in public.
It's also gonna be in the synopsis printed in the paper. It's going to be the meeting minutes itself on OCTV and in the YouTube minutes.
And so, it'll be published on the website, the minutes, it'll be published after.
It will be published, yeah.
Okay. Trustee, clerk Wright, you, you already answered my comment.
Thank you.
The synopsis, minutes.
I have it.
It's in the.
You have your hand up.
For clarification.
Yes, sir.
So, an example you gave with the waste hauler committee, that would be an example, so I'm putting more time, if they would come to the board and say, I need to spend more time, how do I get paid for it?
Correct.
I'd like to pose that to attorney Oland. If that's part of your statutory duty, you cannot get additional pay.
Exactly. So, if there was extra work, and folks were like, you know, this is way more, then they might come to the board and say, let's talk about changing the payment for attending that meeting. And then, that would include all the prep work that's associated with that. So, you could, you could address it through that measure.
That'd be a case-by-case scenario?
Yes. Yes. Every case is different. Treasurer Ferrari referenced the water sewer committee. It was one committee you've never been on. It's a committee that is intense. It's, it meets for four hours in here, and then the work that's done afterwards in doing analyzational rates, in doing inspection at sites, ordering materials, working with the engineer. We may provide the chairman of that committee 10 hours a month to do the non-statutory duties of that committee. Treasurer Ferrari?
In my opinion, I think this is all really not necessary. We should have reached out to the committees, establish duties for them. And like I said, let's say water sewer, give that person $4,000 a year to be chair, understanding with that role comes more responsibilities. Then a regular member maybe gets 135, and the other member, as a secretary, get additional money.
Now, you gotta remember, Joe, or Treasurer Ferrari, this is a recommendation from the personnel committee.
Oh, and I get it. I just think we need to have it situated where we have it on a committee level, not just at. not just statutory duty level. So then if John's chair of water sewer, you pay him $4,000 extra a year, it's assumed he's going to take on more of an active role to, to do all these, these duties. A regular member would not take on those roles. I think that's how you structure it.
Let me ask you a question.
I just think this is all.
Since we're doing opinions. What opinion would solve all of this problem with all this extra non-statutory duties that we're assigning committee members?
Okay. Well, there's different ways, you know, from a legal capacity, I mean, the board has a great deal of discretion about how they handle things.
A full-time employee?
Now, the, the challenge here is that if we're talking about a great number of hours that are going to require compensation, then that might raise a red flag to the board that would say perhaps we need an actual employee or an assigned consultant on contract to handle these. Because the role of the board is, is really to make decisions and support more so than to.
I'm going to say this. I'm going to say this. We are here approving a recommendation for non-statutory pay because we had made a presentation to this board three times to have an employee do the work that these committee members are doing and not being paid for. So this recommendation from the personnel committee is a way to get those members compensated. Trustee Payne?
So I would just like to say, and maybe I'm a unicorn here, but I, you know, we're here to serve the public.
Yes.
The trustees here are not here to, this is not how we make our living.
Correct.
This is not how we do any, you know, do anything. We're not doing it for the money, obviously. So if we're assigned the committee, you know, by being on the board, we know there's work outside the board. We know we have to do our homework. We're, we're doing it on our own time. We're not being paid for it. If we're assigned to a committee, there's a lot of work that goes into it. A lot of reading on some of them, a lot of work on some of them. We are aware of that, or we should be aware of that, and that's just all part of the whole. Okay, I do, I, I do, and I think if something is extraordinary, and I might mention waste hauler. If something is extraordinarily time-consuming, that, that should be brought before the board. But I don't think every committee is, anytime you have work outside of your committee work, you know, if you're doing homework and if you're trying to figure things out, I don't think we should be compensated for it. It's just part of the job.
That, that trustee Payne has taken out of my mouth and we are old school and.
I mean, I'm here for the public servants.
So am I, yeah. Trustee Colvin?
First, I agree with trustee Payne. But second, I just want to say this is a policy, it's just to establish how people get paid. We're not saying people are getting paid.
Correct.
This is codified, and I go back to Attorney Olin. I mean, this is kind of necessary to, to put a policy in place to say, hey, we are meeting these, the law. We are meeting what is in the code.
Through the chair to the trustee's point, that is 100% accurate because as there are discrepancies in how things are handled and when you have the policy and procedure of how it's supposed to go, that allows it to be a little bit more defensible if something goes wrong because you have a set of rules of how you're going to do things. I would also say that the, it is recommended that boards, township boards, put these policies in place so that it is set and known how things will be handled and it provides some transparency, a little bit less of the opportunity for people to assume that things aren't above board. It's all handled through a set system.
Everything done is to be above board. We don't want somebody turning in committee meetings that aren't going to committee meetings. We don't want committee members doing things outside the committee and not being paid. That is real work, not just our subservient roles in society here. I mean, if I got paid for coming in every day from six to 6:30, I, I, you know, I'd be rich. Yeah, right. But it's, it's, this is trying to say, if there's extraordinary things to get paid for, we have to get paid. We have to have an audit trail of who's getting paid, why they're getting paid, and you're not going to get rich. Trustee Colvin?
I move to approve the resolution to establish a policy for standards regarding assignment and compensation for board member performance of non-statutory duties and authorize the clerk to execute the file as seen.
Second. I have a motion by trustee Colvin and a second by trustee Payne. Questions?
I want to ask that question again just to make my own mind clear. So when we want to have something above them beyond the normal committee comp, that committee would approach the board and say, this is more than outside of the normal parameters.
It's all in the policy. Yes, sir. Exactly like you said.
So case by case?
Yes.
Okay.
Roll call?
Treasurer Ferrari. Trustee Knoll?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Item 10D, committee and commission application process. Trustee Colvin?
Okay, again, I ask Attorney Olin, this is just, we're just putting together a process about how to apply for a committee, so.
Absolutely. This is an internal standard operating procedure and an application that would be posted on your website so that residents, others could express interest in becoming a member of a committee. And then the process of how those will be submitted and then reviewed. Elected officials would not have to complete this application process in order to do that and that's out, that's outlined in the, in the procedure. It would really just be so that you can gauge interest and solicit folks when you have a need for a committee.
We had two committees this year that have outside people on it. Not, I mean, outside begging Deputy Clerk McCulloughs. They're never required to be on committees. We asked her to be on the personnel committee. She could have asked to be on it if this application was there. We had eight people on the master plan oversight committee. We went out and tried to beg people to come be on that committee. One of these applications is filed, it's stored, it's saved. If somebody wants to be on the planning commission, if they want to be on the ZBA, they want to be on the elections commission, they want to be on the parks, the library. I mean, they could turn in an application.
Thank you. That's an excellent point about this. This is not just for committees the board creates. This is for all of those other bodies that the supervisor just mentioned.
It doesn't pertain to the township board?
No, it does not. No.
Somebody outside?
No.
Okay.
Right. Any other questions? Clerk Wright?
Yeah, under, under the notice, it indicates that a description of the function for the notice will be created. Who's responsible to create that notice?
Okay, you want me to create your elections committee commission? You want to do the ZBA commission? I guess it would be those requiring any commissions. By statute, the supervisor applies the planning commissioners.
No, my point is it's just one notice and it has six different items that need to be put into that notice.
I don't understand your question.
It says, this information may be, or, notice. Board members will be.
Read the whole sentence.
I will. The notice shall include a description of the function, membership requirements, any per diem paid, term of appointment, method of work and due date. So is that the clerk doing that notice? Is that the supervisor? Is that the attorney?
No, that would be, it would be me for the planning commission. It would be me for tax tribunal. It would be you for election commission. It would be Margie for signal hauler if she wanted one on there.
And to your point, it would be trustee Colvin if it was a personnel committee.
Certainly.
She would fill it out and give it to you to post.
If it's your committee or your commission, you would be the one putting that information out there. Wait, let's finish with Clerk Wright.
Yeah, because what I'm thinking is it's just a generic notice and you're just putting in the name of the committee that you're looking to fill.
Yeah, I mean.
So I think that the language would be totally almost 100% the same regardless of what.
Not really.
What committee.
Why would I want, somebody wants to be on the election committee and fill in their whys on elections to be on the planning commission? Why, why wouldn't I want somebody with engineering background, blueprint background, maybe a process engineer? Maybe somebody who's owned an environmental? I, I, you know, on and on and on. You want somebody on there to fill out an application, here's what you need.
So that would be depending on who's taking responsibility for the vacancy. The clerk would be the one creating the notice.
Yes. Okay. I saw trustee Payne first.
Does this mean that we have to do this for every one of our committees? Do we, are we opening up to the public, to have residents?
I believe it to be the, I believe it to be the committees and commissions that people we select to be on, planning commission, library commission.
Oh, okay.
Tax tribunals, things like that.
All right.
Not.
Like ZBA?
Not ZBA.
ZBA, stuff like that.
Right. Not board appointed positions. Yes, Clerk Wright?
Yes, in section, well, it's in the application completion, it states reappointments are required to complete an application for appointment. So as I read that, it means that if you're on planning commission, ZBA or board review, you will provide an application for reappointment, in that case maybe reappointment.
Yeah.
Through the supervisor to the clerk, that would be so that.
Kind of want that. Yeah. I mean, wait, let's let him finish with his question.
I'm going to just confirm.
Yes.
Confirm.
Okay. Trustee Knoll?
Indirectly, we've been operating to a lot of these procedures that you brought up.
Yes.
Last three. The one that came to mind this year was a steering committee.
Yes.
We, we needed a steering committee to fulfill the requirements of the master plan. The supervisor got together because it falls under the planning commission. We went out and put a steering committee together.
Yes.
Through that, we vented the people, one, to see if they had an interest in coming in. Two, we told, we let them know what, what the scope would be requirement, requirements would be of that. The only thing we did do is tell them there would be a duration time and there was an ending to it. So these are lessons learned. But we, we as the part of the, the township, I've been involved, we've been offering a lot to this, a lot to these things.
Now you just have a policy in place. Thank you both for it. Yes, sir. Treasurer Ferrari?
It kind of makes sense because even if you're, that's your current sitting planning commissioner. You're just to be reappointed. You should fill that out so that the supervisor could judge your.
Exactly right.
For better word, fitness, that you're still able to do these duties. Let's say four years ago, I could go to every planning commission meeting. My work schedule changed. I've only been hitting two a year now. The supervisor can take that information, say, okay, thank you for serving for your four years, we really appreciate it. But the commitment level, we don't see is there anymore. I may have to go in a different direction. Then he can have that person explain to him why they may be missing all these meetings. I mean, I, I think it's a good thing.
To the trustee, through, through the chair, to the trustee, to, to the treasurer, to your point, that, that is a good point because for the reappointments, you would want to know that they actually really wanted to be reappointed before you went to the trouble of making the nomination and then they would deny you.
Yes, sir.
Is this only for sitting committees or is this when we have a new committee that comes up?
This will be for sitting committees and any new committees that come up.
If there's a citizen that wants to join the committee.
Or let's say.
We don't want citizens joining all of our committees.
So that would, the request to have a non-board member or else, where would that come from?
This board would authorize you to have somebody on there.
Through the chair to trustee.
Yes, pardon?
That is covered in the committee policy meeting where it does discuss exactly what you're asking about.
Eddie, oh, trustee Colvin.
I move.
Trustee Colvin.
I move to approve and adopt the application form and standard operating guidelines to review, express and review interest in serving on a township committee or board and authorize the clerk to publish and disseminate the same.
Second. I have a motion by trustee Colvin, a second by trustee Payne. Are there any more questions? Hearing none. Roll call?
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Knoll?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Item 10E, procurement policy amendments. Board members attached for your consideration of approval is the updated copy of the Oxford Township procurement policy. A copy of the policy is enclosed in your packet. The following is.
I move to approve the Oxford Township procurement policy as presented, to be effective immediately.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Charles. Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call?
Uh, let's go with trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Knoll?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. I should have voted, Bill. Bill, you won. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy. Item 11, special assessment district deposit fee increase. Clerk Wright?
Uh, this has been contemplated in my mind for a while, so I decided to bring it forward to the township board. And the reason I did that is because of the SADs we've had put in place for the weed control and latest the repaving for Grapevine's manors. The cost has been from a low, when we first started from $1,100 plus, all the way up to a high of $2,777. So what I'd like to do is propose an increase from that, $1,500 to $3,000 so that it covers our costs because it doesn't look like they're going to get any less than $1,500 based on my research.
I move to increase the special assessment district application fee from $1,500 to $3,000 to pay all direct costs and indirect costs associated with establishing a special assessment district. The charter township box will be effective immediately for any new special assessment district applications. The $3,000 application fee shall function as a trust and agency account.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Knoll. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Roll call?
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Knoll?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. This is easier than mine. That's awesome. Let's see how Joe does. 11B, 2024 West Nile virus program.
Our board members, you've got the, suggest what we'd like to do is purchase some more mosquito dumps again this year and give that natural XRT tablets to parts of our parkland. I'll make a motion to purchase 42 cases of the mosquito dunks, 12 by two packs of 4724 per case, for $1984.08, include shipping, and two cases of the natural XRT tablets for $1966.27, include shipping. The total project expenditure is $3,095.35, $3,0912.38 coming from Oakland West Nile Virus Prevention Grant, account one, account number 1001000072.006, and $3797 coming from Oxford Township General Fund number 101531880.001.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Knoll.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes, trustee Payne?
Just a quick question. I haven't, do we go all the way through all of them every year?
Last year we didn't. Last year we had a lot left.
Okay.
So this year we're going to be more generous.
Okay.
I tried to get six out of them. I thought that was a lot, but I guess it wasn't enough.
Okay.
Maybe we're going to get on more.
Yeah.
But on a regular basis, we normally.
Yeah, normally we do.
Normally we run out like June.
Yeah.
And last year we had, we had some leftovers.
All right.
But we're signing for them now and.
We get more aggressive, get people more.
All right.
You know, I had a question because I, I'm going to say it out loud anyway, but how much is this costing us? Okay. It's not costing us that much.
Right. I, I know, but it's still tech, it's still tech.
What drove me nuts, what drove me nuts was to hear we already had it.
Right.
And then I looked down and I went, oh, for 36 bucks, we already got it.
Yeah.
The, the part about who's paying for them still bothers me, the other $3,900, but I, I can see why we already have them. So with that, we have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari and a second by.
Trustee Knoll.
Trustee Knoll. Roll call?
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Knoll?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I'd like to adopt, make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the West Nile virus fund expense reimbursement request as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari and a second by trustee Knoll. Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call?
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Knoll? Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Next year, we need to put like A and B for that one. Or B, keep the two items because we needed two votes on it.
We can do that.
Items removed from the consent agenda, there was none. Item 13, public comment. At this time, I'll welcome any comments from the public. Brian, you don't want me calling, Brian?
On a different, more pleasant note, I just want to share with everybody that our newsletter is currently in production and you should see it in your mailbox either later this week or if, at the very least, probably the early part of next week. On a different level, I also want to just inform everyone that we are gearing up over the next probably six to seven months in preparation for 2025, which will be the 100th anniversary of the Oxford Public Library. So we're very excited about that and of course, that's a milestone that we don't get to celebrate but once and, and it's exciting to be part of that process. So we'll obviously have a lot of follow-up on that as things start to unfold.
Thank you. Any other members of the public want to come on up to the microphone and speak? Seeing none, we'll move on. Board of trustee comments, we'll start on this end this time. Trustee Charles.
None.
Clerk Wright.
Yes, in regard to the library disqualification, I'm in process of potentially looking at our options and if something that I feel is worth moving forward on, I may consider requesting from supervisor Curtis to close session into June meeting to see if there is any validity that we can potentially be successful on overturning this decision that's been cast upon us. It's caused a lot of frustration, disappointment, upsetting, and a lot, a lot of other items that have caused some turmoil for our election process because we pride ourselves in being transparent, accurate, secure, and we just want to make sure that if we have an option, we're, we're going to pursue that. And, oh, one other thing, just happy Mother's Day to all those mothers out there as well.
Treasurer Ferrari, just one thing, the new creation of committees for charter township Oxford board trustees, their continuation of membership, I would really like to have that last paragraph removed if we go to review this again. That's my comment.
Okay.
Continuation of membership, number eight.
Number eight? Okay, trustee Noel.
I just wanted to apologize to the, the board on the committee reports. I did some copying and pasting, they didn't do a good job. You cannot open up some of the things that I put in my committee reports. I will do an actual tutorial, copy, paste, and put it next time so it's actually can be, can be easily viewed.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Payne.
Nothing.
Trustee Colvin.
I just want to thank everyone for their hard work, especially the personnel committee. I know we met several times and went through these documents over and over and over until we could barely see straight. So I appreciate all their hard work and I would just ask anybody on the board if they would like to have changes or see other updates in these policies, please send me your concerns so I can ask all committee.
I'll be forwarding you some, thank you.
As will I.
Okay, I have a few. First off, the township roof has been replaced two days. They tore it all off. I walked around, didn't even find one nail. Hopefully, we don't find any in our, they did a magnificent job. Secondly, the township board conference room, the televisions and hookup does not work. Our audio is kind of terrible, but an update on that Danielle gave me today, the, all of the material has been ordered, the TVs, the microphones, the amps, everything to make this conference room available electronically. That should be coming in soon and when it is, it will be done. Joey, you didn't mention about the safety path. You're having a pre-conist next week.
That already happened.
It already happened?
Yep.
They're going to start repairing a lot of safety paths in the community. You'll see workers on the path with the equipment, so be careful. You're going to start seeing sewer pipe delivered this week or next in preparation for the sewer main on M24. And in June, we have the Seymour Lake celebration and the Tough Mudder event coming to Oxford. So we have a lot of things going on and I do want to thank all the committees. I'm trying to stay out of the, the committee business and let the recommendations come. It's, it's valuable that we have these processes in place to audit, to verify, and to get work done and to be accountable for it and take the recommendations of those committee members and bring them in front of the board. Other than that, that's all I have.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Colvin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed can stay here.
Curtis, come sign this one. We can do if somebody stays.
What if somebody says no?
They can stay.
They got a key to get in and get out.